One second to get everything situated.
Recording in progress.
Let me know. Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Half Moon Bay City Council of February 1st, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature and will be called upon and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. The meeting will also be streamed on Channel 27, on Pacific Coast TV, and on Facebook. You may join by phone at 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 995-8894-7925. If you are joining the meeting by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. And Victor, would you like to discuss in Spanish the procedures for folks who would like to join?
Gladly. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Mr. Nizbed, Ms. Enberg, and all city staff, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Muy buenas noches. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes que esta reunión será interpretada en el español. Para poder acceder el canal de audio, usted tendrá que hacer clic en el botón de interpretación que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla, que es un icono de un globo o un mundo en su barra de tareas de esta plataforma de Zoom. Después de hacer eso, aparecerá un menú y entonces usted podrá seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Victor. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Rorback.
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose.
Here.
Mayor Reddick.
Present.
Do you have a forum?
So, we are moving on to public forum, and this item is intended for the public to address items that are not on the regular meeting agenda. Jessica, could you invite people to participate?
Yes, if anyone has any general public forum contents, comments, please raise your hand. Okay, we have Joyce Logan. Joyce, you have three minutes.
Okay. I guess I must have been fast on the raise the hand. My interest tonight is in the subject of redistricting and being thoughtful about the decision-making process.
Joyce. Joyce, we hear your sound.
Are you hearing anything?
Now we are.
Okay. There was a survey sent out to residents asking what we would recommend in terms of redistricting and what our communities were. And I'd like to offer that what I feel my community is the whole coast side, all aspects of it. The city of Half Moon Bay, all aspects, economic, livability, sustainable, and responsible to residents. And then another area of my community is seniors because of my young age. And then there was a follow-up question. Would my community benefit from having multiple representatives or being in a focused group and there being one city council representative of my senior community? My opinion is that multiple representatives would serve the senior community far better than a condensed one council member representing the senior community because there are seniors throughout Half Moon Bay and throughout the coast side. Taking that concept, I would like to suggest that the five district map 503B is a much better reflection of my personal opinions. And I do live in Canyata Cove, and I feel that the representation would be much better by that map and not being connected by a long skinny east side of Highway 1 with the senior campus community in downtown Half Moon Bay. I will also say that you're going to hear from Jan Hansen, and I am not repeating the things she's going to share with you, but I raised my hand in support of what she's going to offer to you. Thanks, everybody, for what you've done.
Thank you, Joyce. Our next speaker is Jan Hansen.
Yes, my name is Jan Hansen, and I live in Canyata Cove. I'm speaking on my own behalf and would like to make the following three points. Last Thursday, January 27, I attended the Zoom meeting of the Redistricting Advisory Committee. This was one of two public input sessions that had been scheduled as part of the redistricting process and that were intended to occur before the council completed its discussions and made its final map selection. The video of that meeting is available on Pacific Coast TV website. It should also soon be posted on the city's website. I would urge you to watch that video. During the meeting, after receiving public comments, the committee became aware of the impact its recommended map, 504C, would have on the approximately 600 people in Canyata Cove. Due to the city's election sequencing, if Canyata Cove is moved two miles up the road and becomes part of District 3, it will be denied its vote to vote, its right to vote for city council in 2020 until 2024. Since the last time Canyata Cove voted for council was 2018, this would create a gap of six years. This is a form of disenfranchisement. On the other hand, if we stay in District 4, we will vote as scheduled this year, 2022. Upon receiving this information, at least four of the six committee members present at the January 27 meeting acknowledged that this is a serious issue needing discussion by the council. One committee member said he would not have recommended map 504 if he had known about these repercussions. Another member said it was very unfortunate, we were not aware of this before. Various members of the committee said they were shocked, disappointed, surprised, and concerned. The committee emphasized that its job was to draw maps, but that the council needs to continue policy discussions and questions like election sequencing and gerrymandering. At least two committee members acknowledged that council discussion was cut short on January 19 and did not address those issues. Some committee members stated the need for more public input. My second point, the council's final decision will control Half Moon Bay elections for the next 10 years. So let's take the time to do it right. There are four council meetings remaining before the April 17 final deadline to submit the final decision to the county. During that time, the council should fully complete the necessary policy discussions and legal considerations that were beyond the scope of the redistricting committee. There should also be more opportunity for public input as had been originally anticipated. My third and final point, on January 19, recall that the redistricting committee did submit an alternate five district map to the council. That was map 503B. That map eliminates all the issues raised by the current concerns, meets all the criteria, eliminates the issue of gerrymandering, and eliminates the problem caused by sequencing of elections. In light of the information that came to the attention of the redistricting committee only after the council's January 19 meeting, map 503B should be adopted by the council as the final map. Map 503B is the obvious and only logical choice. Thank you.
Good, Jan. And next speaker is Belinda Ariaga.
Hi, everybody. Hello, council. I'm calling tonight because we're really concerned about the housing situation in Half Moon Bay, which has escalated from a crisis to, I guess I would use the words, an extreme crisis. We are seeing a lot of families having to be forced to make the decision to leave the area, and they're no longer having even opportunities to rent rooms. Since we were last here, which I think was about two months ago, we have seen the situation worsen. And one thing I just want to mention that I don't know if the city can do anything about, but we're seeing so many cases of families that are being told that they cannot rent because of their family size, because they don't want to rent to multiple families, which we understand is a situation and obviously a concern, but because houses are no longer being rented by the owners, there's no kind of, I don't know, sensitivity to Latino families that are really trying to make ends meet here and be able to live on the coast side. And my question for all of us tonight to consider is what's going to happen when we lose our farmworker community here, when we lose our hardworking Latino community, when we no longer are able to support them to be able to sustain housing here? Because there's nothing available. We have our own, we have multiple, multiple families on our list that are literally in tears looking for homes. One of our own staff has been looking for housing for months and cannot find anything, and the numbers go on and on. We can't even find trailer homes. We can't find rooms for rent. And honestly, it's time that we try to figure out alternative actions. I know that the council is looking at housing and that there's supportive efforts for that, but we're talking about years down the road for that to happen, and we need something urgent now. And it is really important that you all know that there are many families, individuals, and folks moving out of the area because they're not even given a chance to be able to rent a home here and because rents are going way high and wages are, you know, pretty much, you know, the same for hardworking folks. So I just really want to put a plea out that something has to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. Next, we have Patty Ramirez.
Bueno, si me escucha?
One momento, Patty.
Bueno?
Yeah, hold on one second. We're getting the interpreter online.
With our blood?
Go to the next one and come back to her later.
Victor, I just switched it over from interpretation, if that helps.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, while I log on to the other one, you can move on to the next one and come back to her, but I think we can continue. Un momento, señora, por favor. Si me escu-
Si.
Okay. Si quieres ser su comentario, por favor, adelante, disculpe y gracias por su paciencia.
But nada, mi nombre es Patty Ramirez, y quiero agradecerle primeramente al concejales por escucharme el día de hoy sobre un asunto muy personal que es la vivienda.
Okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank the council for listening to this special issue in regards to housing.
Yo soy una de las personas afectadas en estos momentos que están solicitando vivienda. Mi situación es de que por más que le busco me piden a hoy, me piden más requisitos de lo que era antes. Y yo recordando cuando llegué a Half Moon Bay, cuando rentamos un departamento, bueno, era un duplex de tres cuartos, dos baños, nos cobraban 1850. Y ahorita, por algo similar, están cobrándonos 5000 a 5500.
Un momento, por favor. So, I am one of those people that is affected, I'm sorry, I'm one of those people that has been affected. I'm looking for housing, and one thing that I've noticed is that they're asking for more things, more requisites than before. I remember when I first came to Half Moon Bay, we were renting an apartment, was more like a duplex. It was a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, and they were charging us $1850. And now, for something similar to that, today, they're charging anywhere from $5,000 to $5,500.
Es increíble el costo de vivienda, exagerado y ridículo, que no tiene control, que cualquiera puede cobrar lo que se le antoja sin tener en cuenta la situación de algunos de nosotros, que por más que quisiéramos buscar algo económico y trabajamos honradamente aquí en esta comunidad, no se nos puede proporcionar algo semejante al sueldo base que tenemos.
So, this is unbelievable, it's incredible, it's exaggerated, it's ridiculous, and you know, there's no control over any of this. And so that means that anybody can just charge whatever they want, and for people that are looking for something like this, that are working hard, you know, we can't really get the same thing.
Y solamente quisiera otra vez hacer énfasis de que ahora ya no estamos pudiendo hacer el trato directamente con el dueño de la vivienda o de la casa, departamento, si no tenemos que ir a través de alguna gente de inmobiliaria.
So, you know, I really want to put emphasis on this, that now we can't even deal directly with what the house owners or the people that own the property, but more so, we have to go through, like, real estate people.
Yo solamente solicito su ayuda, nada más para mí, sino para varios. Yo estoy hablando de más de 20 familias en una necesidad urgente en estos momentos de vivienda.
So, I'm not just asking help for myself, but I'm also asking for more than 20-plus families that have an urgent need for housing.
Agradezco mucho su atención y espero me puedan o nos puedan ayudar a resolver este caso de viviendas justa para todos.
So, thank you for, you know, your attention, and I would ask you to please help us resolve this urgent matter with housing.
Y por último quisiera recordarles que yo soy la familia Ramírez, que vivía en el 555 de Kelly, de la cual, desafortunadamente tuve que dejarla y que ahora la veo cada vez que paso vacía, que me siento que me desalojaron por no sé qué, por ninguna razón, así me siento yo.
So, lastly, I just want to remind you all that I am from the family, Ramirez family, that used to live at 555 Kelly, and, you know, which unfortunately I had to leave, and now I walk by it and I drive by it and I see it that it's empty, and I feel like I was pushed out for, I don't know why.
Gracias, señor Victor, y gracias a todos, a los concejales, por su escucha, y espero una pronta respuesta, que no me digan, lo vamos a ver, lo vamos a ver, lo vamos a platicar, y no veo resultados. Gracias.
So, thank you, Mr. Victor. Thank you all council members for listening, and I'll wait for a relatively quick response and no more of this. Let's wait and see, let's wait and see, and let's wait and see.
Gracias, Patty. We're in a terrible place. It's, nobody can afford to buy homes, and so they're looking to rent and they're driving up rents. It's the demand for housing that's driving up rents, and it is a serious problem. I don't know if staff would like to just briefly address, you know, where we're at and where we're going on the housing issue. Mayor Reddick, we do have two more speakers, so I'm not sure if you want to have that done after the speakers or now.
Si quieres hablar con los que hab-
Hold on one second, Nicholas.
Tenemos más personas que van a estar hablando.
It looks like these speakers may be speaking about-
Parece que estos van a estar hablando sobre problemas de-
Okay. Norma Zavala.
Si me pueden escuchar? Bueno, hola.
Hola.
Okay.
Buenas noches, señor. ¿Qué tal? ¿Cómo está?
Buenas, buenas noches. Pues mi nombre es Norma, y yo nada más quiero también, pues quiero que sepan que yo también he estado pasando por diferentes dificultades de renta. Yo, las rentas son demasiado caras, tuve que salir de una renta porque era mucho dinero, la casa estaba en malas condiciones. Ahorita estoy viviendo en una trailer móvil con mi hijo, pero mi hija sigue buscando renta, no encuentra, siempre estamos pasando por dificultades.
Okay.
Y pues nos gustaría, por favor, que nos escuchen, que si nos pueden ayudar a que las rentas sean más accesibles para nosotros, trabajamos duro para querer tener una renta. También estoy trabajando en un programa, estoy yendo a los ranchos, estoy mirando cada dificultad de las familias, cómo están viviendo. Hay familias que viven en un cuarto con su esposo, sus dos hijos, comparten cocina, comparten el baño. Es algo tan triste que estamos pasando todos, las casas están en malas condiciones. He mirado casas que tienen astotas, cucarachas, ratas, pero las rentas no las tienen, las quitan en malas condiciones, tan caras, no podemos pagar. Y si podemos pagar ese dinero, estamos acareciendo de otras cosas.
Okay. Permítame un momentito.
Sí.
So first of all, my name is Norma, and I'm also going through difficult times with rent. The rents are way too high. For example, I had to leave a certain place because of that. We were paying too much money. The place was in really bad conditions. I'm now living in a trailer with my kids, but we're constantly looking for a place, and we just want you all to listen to us and help us. You know, we want the rent to be more accessible, you know, we all work hard, and, you know, I also belong to a group that goes to farms and sees the farmworkers in difficult situations. They sometimes live in one room with their entire family. There's a shared bathroom, there's a shared kitchen. The places are in really bad conditions. Sometimes there's even rats and cockroaches. And the thing is, is that if we happen to get a place like that and we end up paying that money, then we suffer in pain for other things, and we don't have other things. Adelante, señor.
Y pues yo nada más quería dejar de saber todo eso, que ojalá que nos pudiera haber un apoyo, que nos pudieran ayudar, que pudiéramos tener rentas que uno pudiera más pagar, que, pues no sé, pero que nos ayudaran en una forma u otra. También, las personas vivimos así, en un cuarto, rentando, amontonados por el alto precio de que si salemos a buscar más, las rentas están demasiado caras, con lo que ganamos no lo podemos pagar. Y pues es todo. Muchas gracias por que nos están escuchando. Ojalá que todas estas personas que están aquí, que se están dando su tiempo de estar escuchando esto, ojalá que nos puedan ayudar. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, señora. So I just wanted to let you all know about this. We would really appreciate some support. Make rents affordable, you know, help us in one way or another, you know, with people living in one rooms because of the high rents and we don't make enough money. So, thank you very much for listening, and I hope that there will be some help.
Gracias, Norma. And next, we have Juana Ruano.
Si me escucha, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Sí, mi nombre es Juana Ruano.
My name is Juana Ruano.
Y hoy nuevamente estoy, hemos estado en varias reuniones con ustedes aquí.
We've been in a lot of meetings with you guys here.
Y quiero, como les dije la última vez, que nos escuchen.
And I want you guys, like I mentioned last time, to listen to us.
Que esto no se quede en el viento, lo que hablamos aquí.
That this doesn't just kind of go away, whatever we're talking about here.
Porque hablo por nuestra comunidad y por mí.
Because I'm talking on behalf of myself and my community.
Que nos urge, que hagan viviendas flexibles para poder pagarlas nosotros.
We ask you to urgently build housing that we can pay for.
Y les he comentado que nosotros no podemos pagar una renta que valga 4,000 dólares, donde el dinero que entra a la casa son 3,000 dólares al mes.
So, like I've mentioned before, you know, we can't pay something that costs $4,000 when the income coming into the household is only 3,000.
Y no, no más soy yo, o sea, muchas familias estamos en estas condiciones sufriendo de la renta.
And it's not just me, there are many families that are suffering from these high rents.
Y es muy triste que los niños no tengan su cuarto propio, que estén viviendo tres niños y sus papás en un solo cuarto.
And it's really sad that kids don't have their own room. You know, there are three kids living with their parents in one room.
Yo miro aquí en Jamon Bay, ya lo había platicado la otra vez, cuántos lugares hay para hacer viviendas?
So, I, you know, I mentioned this last time, and I've seen that in Half Moon Bay, there's many places where, you know, housing can be built.
Pero necesitamos de su apoyo y de todos los que tienen que ver en esto para que se puedan hacer las viviendas.
But we need your support or whoever people that need to be involved in order for that housing to take place.
Pero confiamos en ustedes, por eso están ustedes. Ustedes son nuestra voz y los necesitamos para que hablen por nosotros, por la comunidad.
So, we trust in you, you guys are our voice, we need you to speak on behalf of the community. So we trust in you, you guys are our voice, we need you to speak on behalf of the community.
Y pienso que cada uno de ustedes, si estuviera viviendo en estas circunstancias, que estamos viviendo nosotros, también hablarían.
I think that if any one of you was living in the same situations that we were, you guys would express yourselves or voice your opinion.
Así que con el corazón en la mano, les vuelvo a pedir y a decirles que hablen por nosotros, por favor, los necesitamos. Por aquel niño que, que todavía no puede usar su andadera, que está en el cuarto sentadito y que no puede andar en su andadera por toda la casa.
So, you know, I'm, I'm approaching you guys with my heart on my sleeve. Please, you know, speak for us, you know, speak for all of those little babies and their walkers that don't have a house where they can walk through.
Así que muchísimas gracias y recuerden que somos solo un corazón y un solo mundo. Así que por favor, apóyenos y por favor, hablen por nosotros, gracias por explicarnos.
Thank you very much. Remember that we are one heart, one world and remember to speak on our behalf. Thank you.
Gracias Víctor por, por traducirnos, porque nos está traduciendo muy bien. Gracias.
Muchas gracias señora. Thank you Victor for, for interpreting. You're doing a good job.
Gracias Juana.
Arandita González.
Hi everyone, thank you so much for listening to us. My name is Arandita González. I grew up here, I immigrated when I was nine years old and now I am a mom of two children. And my main concern as well as the other speakers is that housing, housing is really hard. I want my kids to grow up here. I am a mom of a child with special needs. And, and it's really hard that the rent has increased. I started paying eight hundred dollars a month and now I'm paying almost three thousand dollars a month. And this is really hard for me as a parent of a child with special needs. Cause I had to stop being a home, a stay home mom to help my husband pay the bills. I couldn't stay home and support my child, um, being, getting therapy at home. Cause we couldn't afford it, but we cannot move out of San Mateo County cause there's no other services for my child that he can get either in Modesto or in other places that, that is less expensive to live or even to buy a home. So it's either being here, paying a higher rent, working, my husband has to work sometimes two jobs. I have to, I had to work two jobs last year during the pandemic, cause we couldn't even afford it. And I can't imagine families who have low incomes, also with special needs, that they're living in one bedroom, apart, renting a one bedroom and they can't get no services like any AVA or any therapy, cause they're renting a bedroom. And if they bring someone home to get services for their children, they kicked out, they get kicked out. And they, there's no homes, so they can have their own place. So please help us find places or stop, if there's a way that they can stop increasing the rent. Cause I can't imagine, I had a dream of buying a home here in Half Moon Bay. There's no way I can even afford a home or even a mobile home park, cause everything is so expensive. And now I'm living in a one bedroom, two bedroom apartment. And my kid, my daughter and my son, who are special needs, have, are sharing a bedroom and they don't have no privacy. And then they want to charge us six hundred dollars more for having a pet that is having, is helping my son with anxiety and with his autism. So it's kind of unfair that they want to even charge us more for having a pet that is helping my children. Thank you so much for, for listening and thank you so much and hopefully there's a change.
Gracias Arandita.
You're welcome.
Jorge Sanchez. Jorge.
Looks like he's muted. Hola, me escuchan.
Here we go.
Buenas noches.
Hi Victor.
Yeah, thank, thank you Jessica, sorry. Buenas noches señor, ¿cómo está?
Bien, bien.
Qué bueno, eh, por favor, si gusta hacer su comentario adelante.
Claro que sí. Bueno, primero que nada, muchísimas gracias, mi nombre es Jorge Sánchez. Soy yo Venezuela, también vivo aquí en Half Moon Bay. Yo junto con mi familia, en este momento estoy asignado en mi casa. ¿Por qué? Porque yo tengo dos niñas, mi esposa, mi hermano también vive aquí y mi prima también vive aquí. Por la situación que está pasando en uno de los condados que tiene más, no sé qué, en qué posición está, pero sé que es uno de los condados que, que tiene buena posición económica.
Okay.
Y es increíble cómo está pasando esta gran, gran, gran crisis que hay de vivienda, es algo increíble.
Okay, un momento, yep. So, thank you very much. First of all, uh, my name is Jorge Sanchez, I'm from Venezuela. And I live in Half Moon Bay. And right now, uh, you know, I, I'm with my family, my, my two kids, my wife. There's also a cousin and another person that lives with us. And one thing I, it's difficult for me to understand is, I, I don't know what kind of situation this is in, but I know that this county is a county that is in one of the best kind of economic situations. Adelante señor.
Es increíble cómo, cómo puede estar pasando esta gran sit, esta gran crisis. Yo en mi casa es un apartamento de dos cuartos y un solo baño y no, 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 no nos abastecemos, es imposible. Mi hija no tiene una libertad dentro de la casa, no tienen un, un sitio donde, donde compartir normalmente como una familia normal. Todos trabajamos, todos trabajamos, también quiero que pongan un poquito de su corazón y se pongan en posición y en el zapato de nosotros, que también trabajamos todos los días. Yo tengo tres trabajos para mantener mi familia y para pagar la renta. Mi hermano trabaja en tres trabajos para ayudar también para pagar aquí y mi prima también tiene dos trabajos para ayudar, para pagar a todos aquí, para poder vivir aquí asignados.
Por favor, un momento, por favor. So, I don't know how this situation could, could be happening. You know, we live in an apartment, it's a two bedroom and one bathroom. And it's just not big enough for all of us. You know, my daughters, uh, both my daughters don't have a, a place for themselves. And I just want to ask you to please have a heart and put yourself in, in our shoes. I work three jobs just in order to pay the bills and the rent. My brother also has three jobs to do the same and my cousin also has three jobs to, to do the same thing.
Ahorita estoy trabajando, ahorita estoy trabajando en un programa que estoy tratando, tengo un poquito de acceso a la tecnología, buen acceso, tengo buen control, un poco de control de la tecnología y he estado manejando en diferentes páginas donde rentan, porque quiero ayudar a más de veinte familias que conozco, conozco familias que están viviendo en hoteles, que no consiguen renta, ¿por qué? Por la cantidad de requisitos, es algo imposible, es algo ridículo, que te pidan tanto. Claro que tenemos que, tiene que haber un control, por supuesto, el propietario se merece un respeto. Sabemos que queremos obedecer las leyes, nosotros la comunidad latina lo que hacemos es trabajar y seguimos las leyes de los Estados Unidos, pero necesitamos que el condado haga, meta su mano. Usted señor alcaldesa, discúlpeme con todo respeto que usted se merece esta noche, la estoy conociendo. Espero que por favor su corazón se abra en este momento y piensen todos esos niños que son los más afectados, que no tienen la culpa. Son niños inocentes, inocentes de todo lo que están pasando, sus padres, de todo lo que hacen sus padres para poder mantenerse aquí en Half Moon Bay, que también somos parte de la economía en Half Moon Bay. Half Moon Bay avanza gracias también a la comunidad y a todos nosotros.
Okay, un momento, por favor. So thankfully, I, I also have this other group or, or job where it allows me some to access technology. And what I've been doing is I've been going through different pages, um, you know, to help twenty plus other families. You know, some of these families are living in hotels because they can't get a place because of everything that they're requiring of them. I mean, this is really impossible, it's actually ridiculous. Um, and one thing I have to say is we have to respect the owners of, of, you know, the, these places. You know, we as Latinos are hardworking, we work and we have to respect the laws and everything. But, you know, we, one thing I want to say, you know, that from the county and Madam Mayor, I'm just now starting to know you, is to please open your heart and most importantly, think of the kids and also think of the parents of, of what all they do just to stay in Half Moon Bay. And you know, we're a part of this economy as well. And so when Half Moon Bay goes up, we go up and vice versa. Adelante señor.
Me parece excelente que haya este tipo de, de comunicación, que esto esperemos que profesionalmente no se quede en la voz y es solamente lo que comentamos, sino que avancemos por una mejor comunidad, por una mejor Half Moon Bay, por un mejor condado. Nosotros también queremos trabajar, nosotros también queremos vivir dignamente, nosotros también queremos pagar una renta. Nosotros no estamos pidiendo nada regalado, ni que nos regalen nada, solamente queremos una vivienda digna, con un precio digno, adecuado a lo que gana un sueldo mínimo de una persona.
Uh, gracias señora. So, um, you know, I think these types of talks and communication are excellent. You know, I hope this actually goes a bit further and just doesn't kind of gets lost in the wind for a better community, for a better Half Moon Bay. You know, we want to work, we just want to live with some dignity and we want to have some prices that are according to the income that we have. Algo más señor.
Muchísimas gracias por su atención.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Y mi respeto a todos los concejales, muchísimas gracias a todos y a la señora alcaldesa, muchísimas gracias.
And thank you very much to all council members, my respects and most of you, Madam Mayor.
Gracias.
Muchísimas gracias Víctor.
The, the now that señor.
That concludes public comment here.
Okay, so I would ask, um, our community development department is not present this evening, but I'd ask the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I can certainly make, make a few comments and I'll start with where you led off a, a few speakers ago. I mean, this is a very difficult situation and it appears like as if it's only getting worse. Um, as you mentioned, rents are going up and so is the cost of housing. And I can attest to that very directly. And I wake up every day and read articles in the newspaper, um, other cities around the bay experiencing the same thing. So we're seeing it in the bay, we're seeing it in California, we're seeing it nationwide and it's, it's very challenging. I was recently a part of a panel on affordable housing. And, uh, yeah, it was somewhat depressing to hear some of the other speakers speak about the challenges and what's going on and how hard it is. That, that said, you asked, um, you know, what we can offer. And we did have, um, back in November, I believe it was, a, a special meeting, a summit, I suppose, on, on housing. And out of that meeting, the council did direct, got direct staff to focus on two specific properties that are owned by the city, um, ones in which potentially affordable housing could be constructed on those properties. A previous speaker, Patty Ramirez, mentioned she used to live in the property at 555 Kelly, I'll start with that one. Um, so direction was given to, to look at that property and look at putting it on the market, so to speak, and offer it up as a potential property for affordable housing. Uh, so we are doing that, um, we have a request for proposal, or request for qualifications, I should say. That will be hitting the street in about a week. And the purpose of that is to solicit interest from would be home builders, would be affordable building experts, nonprofits, uh, anyone who might be interested in partnering with the city to develop, finance and even manage a, a, an affordable housing project on 555 Kelly. So we're quite excited about that. Uh, we hired a consultant to help us with that, I met with her last week. And as I said, that will go out, we will receive proposals, we will select the best one. And then we would bring a, a, a development agreement essentially back to the council. Provided, um, their proposal has merit and looks like it has, you know, the financial wherewithal to be successful. And we would then enter into some kind of an agreement so they could take the steps to, to design, develop and finance a project on that site. So that's moving forward. The other property that was discussed that day, Stone Pine, we continue to work on. You might recall that there were various constraints and challenges associated with that project, but we certainly have not thrown it out yet. Uh, it just required further investigation on some of the potential risks that were discussed in November, uh, before we could come back and recommend, um, to proceed on that property. And then finally on sites, um, over the holidays, another possible property came to our attention. I'm, I'm not at liberty to disclose the property at this point, but the county has connections to the property and they seem to be motivated to partnering with us on this particular property, also for an affordable housing project. And so that seems very promising to me, we're still working out, um, some of the details on the site, um, to make, to make sure. But I, obviously the county being motivated and wanting to be a partner would add some extra horsepower to that site that the other two sites, um, don't have right now. I think the county would be a great partner and would, and would potentially bring money along with, um, skills and expertise to, to develop that one. So that one's exciting and when we have more on that, we'll, we'll bring that one back. And then finally, not on housing sites or housing production, we have been having conversations internally and individually with, with, with some of you about the idea of a vacant, um, house tax. And there was an article in the San Francisco Chronicle, I believe just yesterday, about this concept. Several cities in the bay have either done it or are contemplating it. San Francisco, in this case, just had a study done to look at the inventory of their vacant houses. They have a lot more than we do. But they are looking to put a flat tax per house tax on a vacant house on the ballot in November, they're at least doing the studies necessary for a bigger city to consider something like that. And we think that might be a good idea here. The idea of course is that the tax would specifically go to a fund to then be used for affordable housing projects. And the idea came up when the census numbers were presented to your council, I don't know, two months ago. And it, at that time, we noticed that I think we had two hundred and sixty-four vacant houses. And we probably have more proportionately than other cities do because, because of our location and the fact that we are a tourist town. We do seem to have, um, second homes, um, that are vacant, you know, maybe eighty, ninety percent of the time and only used for vacations or even worse yet, potentially Airbnb's. Um, so that I think is promising, we will bring that back to the council in March. When you have your priority setting workshop, we want to make sure that we fully vet that idea and that we get council, council concurrence, that we should proceed with that before we would take any next steps. So that, that's what I have today, I wish it was more. And, um, we do appreciate the comments, uh, that we heard from the members of the public today on, on their needs and, and, um, the situations that they find themselves in, uh, with rent going as high as it is. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Bob. I, I think it's time to take a survey of rents in the community again. I know we did it a couple of years ago, but, um, I think we're going through an extraordinary period. And, um, rents appear, at least in the Bay area, I think it's a, a national problem, seem to be going through the roof and it creates a very large windfall for landlords above and beyond the expense to actually, you know, maintain a house. So I would be interested in, in having our housing consultants revisit a, a survey of, um, rental properties to find out what exactly is going on in terms of increases and to bring that information back to council. I know that, uh, via our grant program last year, we, we provided some assistance to nonprofits to help with rents. We probably want to consider that again as we discuss our new program. And we may actually want to, um, get that discussion going earlier rather than later. I, I'm just hearing and feeling that, that the situation is dire and, um, you know, I'd like us to, um, move as expeditiously as possible to, to find ways to address it. It's very, very serious problem. It's a very, very serious problem. And you know, there are a lot of folks who work here and support our economy, are the ecosystem of our economy and can't live here or even nearby. It's definitely a problem. We're a hospitality economy and, you know, depend on our workers. So we really, I think, have to be diligent in our efforts to find solutions.
Thank you for that, Madam Mayor. I will take both of those suggestions. I know we do do surveys of rents from time to time. So I will work with the community development director to look at doing something like that and bring that up to date because it probably hasn't been done for a while. And then your comment about the rental funds, that was done a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago when we were in the throes of the pandemic. Of course, we still are. And as you mentioned, it may even be worse now than it was a year ago. So we'll take a look at that and that can also be a part of the council's conversation when we set priorities.
And it was mentioned at our last housing discussion, the possibility of looking at tenancy in common as well. And that certainly is an opportunity for people to join together to buy properties. And they need to understand the legalities and how it works. But I don't think we should ignore it because it provides an opportunity to join resources to get pretty quick solutions. If there's stuff on the market, that's part of the problem. We don't have inventory. But now we're waiting until something is not on the agenda. So I think we need to move on.
Yeah, I saw our city attorney starting to lean forward a little bit, so.
So moving on, I have no announcements of community activities. I would ask our city attorney whether she has anything to report out from recent closed sessions.
No, the council does not have a recently closed session, nothing to report out.
Thank you for that. And moving on to city manager updates to council.
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the community. We have three items listed on the agenda, but before we start those three, I would like to start with an announcement to the community about a public survey that just started this week. We have hired a firm to do a public safety survey on behalf of the city. And this is something that the council directed of us back in June when the budget was approved. Normally, when you do these random surveys, this is a random survey that they'll be using various modes to complete. You don't want to announce to the community that a survey is coming because it potentially, even that announcement potentially might bias the results. But in this case, we have heard, now that some community members have been getting contacted, we have heard some questions, concerns, or people even thinking it might be a prank call. So we thought it would be good to get the message out that it's legit and you should, if you want to, take the survey. With that, I will turn it over to Matthew just to provide a little bit more details about this survey for the council and for the community.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, council. Next slide, please. So as Bob mentioned, actually go back one more slide for now. As Bob mentioned, we do have a survey that is active right now in the community. This goes back to the work that the city's been doing around public safety and law enforcement over the last year and a half in gathering community feedback in relation to reforms that might be possible and also our upcoming contract renewal renegotiation with the sheriff's office. And so last year, we were directed to work, identify a firm and have a survey developed. And we identified, next slide, please. We identified Probowski Research, which is a well-known and well-respected firm here in California. They are Latino-owned and well-known for their work with Latino communities in California. The subcommittee for public safety of this council met in December to review the questions and provide feedback. And the survey's been refined and as Bob mentioned, it went live yesterday. It is a random survey, which means we were not, people can't self-select. You can't go to our website. You can't go somewhere and decide to do the survey. Individuals in our community will be selected at random to participate in the survey. It's expected to be performed over the next two to three weeks with a goal of reaching a sample size of 300 residents. And that will make this a statistically valid survey. There's no self-selection, but over the course of this time, different modes will be used to make sure that the ultimate survey results are a representative example of our community. So the city and the firm looked at census data and other data to identify proportions of gender, age, ethnicity, race, and even locations within Half Moon Bay to make sure that our community is fully represented by the end of the survey. And so initially, the survey will be performed via cell phone calls, landline calls, texts and emails. And once we reach a point where we're not getting all of the demographics in our city represented, additional measures will be taken to make sure that we reach everybody. So that's the detail we'll provide. If individuals receive a text or an email or phone call from Probowski Research, it is legitimate. It is the firm that the city's working with. We hope that individuals will be willing to take the survey. And we're looking forward to bringing this back to the subcommittee and the full council in the next couple of months. Any questions on that before we move on to the next report?
Yes, so I see on Nextdoor, there's been a discussion about it. And it was confirmed on Nextdoor that this is a legitimate survey. Unfortunately, various people commented that they thought it was a scam and so deleted it. So now I'm guessing there's no way for them to participate since it's a random draw. And I'm just wondering whether it's worth just having a little, you know, community news bite out there, you know, tomorrow, just mentioning this.
Yes, yes, we're working with Jessica and the communications team and we'll get just a brief notice out to the community through all of our channels to make sure people know it's legitimate. And it's unfortunate. The other thing I'll do is I'll check with the consultant to see if there's a way to resend invites to those who declined it already, but my guess is it's probably not possible.
Okay, thank you very much, Matthew. I just want to mention, I forgot to do so earlier in the meeting, that the proclamation for National Poetry Month is actually on there by accident. It should be in April. April is National Poetry Month, so we don't have that presentation this evening. Okay, thank you.
And we do have a couple more city manager updates, Madam Mayor. Next slide, please. I will provide a brief update on COVID-19 as promised at our last meeting. Not a lot has changed over the last two weeks, but there are some promising signs I just wanted to share. Next slide, please. So general updates, reminder that the statewide indoor mask mandate remains in place until February 15th and we'll see if they decide to extend that. But once the statewide mandate is lifted, we are currently still under the system that the state has where county by county, you have to meet certain criteria before you can actually lift the mandate in your county. There are three sets of criteria. San Mateo County has only met one of those criteria so far, which is vaccination rates. The other two have to do with community transmission levels and hospitalizations. We're trending in the right direction on those, but we haven't met the threshold to enter into a period of monitoring before we can lift the mask mandate, which is three weeks. So at this point, the very soonest San Mateo County would be able to lift the mandate would be towards the end of February. And we'll continue to monitor that and notify the community as that changes. San Mateo County is still urging vaccination and boosters for all that can medically and safely do it. Mask wearing when indoors, testing if you're symptomatic and isolating if you're sick. And the new CDC guidance says five days of self-isolation after your first symptoms. And then five days of just wearing a mask all the time. And then after those 10 days, you should be fine. And testing can help gauge that as well. Next slide, please. As far as data goes, we now have almost 700,000 county residents that have received at least one vaccine dose. It's a little less for the full course of vaccines and boosters, but we're trending in that direction. As of yesterday, all those aged five plus in the county with at least one dose of the vaccine is up to 93%. And in Half Moon Bay, we're listed at 100%. Now, I think 100% is probably rounded up from something around 99%, which means there's probably a few folks out there. But I think that is a really incredible sign that Half Moon Bay has done so well with vaccinations, even with, you know, some margin of error. The total county cases, this is the interesting part. Total county cases have gone up over 50% since the beginning of January. They've doubled since the beginning of January. Now, that's cumulative. So it's not that we have 103,000 people infected right now, but now there have been 103,000 cases over the entire period. And that's up from 87,000 just two weeks ago. Half Moon Bay cases have also doubled recently. We were at 782 two weeks ago. We're up to 1,586 now. But that's partially because testing is so rampant now with self-tests and all the testing options. And we know that the Omicron variant is very infectious even when people are fully vaccinated. What's really promising is the RF, which is the transmission rate or the number of people that an infected individual passes the disease along to. Anything under one means we're shrinking and we're moving in the right direction. Anything over one means that for each person that's infected, they're infecting more than one person. Two weeks ago, we're at 1.61 cases per infected person. We're down to 0.65 as of yesterday and that number continues to trend down. Total county hospitalizations has also gone down to 125. I again encourage folks to check out smchealth.org/ data.dashboards to look at some of this data themselves. There's a lot of great information there. And then the school district has a really great data dashboard that shows infections in our schools. Next slide, please. Very quickly, just a reminder for those few people on the coast that have not been vaccinated or need their second or booster shots. Coastside Hope is offering clinics every Friday for those 12 up in El Granada from 1:30 to 4:30 PM. And the Coastside Clinic in Half Moon Bay for 12 and up is Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00. It still remains a little challenging for five to 12-year-olds, but we encourage you to go to myturn.gov or the county's vaccine clinic calendar to find more details. Next slide. COVID testing remains three days a week at the Ted Adcock Community Center, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays from nine to five, Wednesdays from eight to eight. You can go to get an appointment at lhi.care/covidtesting or you can walk up at this point, there's availability. The county also just expanded their ability to offer walk-up testing at the San Mateo Event Center for those that work over the hill or are in urgent need and can't wait for one of our local testing sites. They're testing over 2,000 people a day at that site. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, every address is entitled to four free tests. If you just go to the U.S. Postal Service website or covidtest.gov and those tests will be mailed to you. I have not heard of anybody receiving theirs yet, but hopefully in the next week or two, they'll start arriving in people's mailboxes. And we're starting to find tests, home-based tests available in drugstores and online again. And next slide. And just a reminder, if you're feeling any symptoms, regardless of your vaccination status, please get tested, know your status and use extra precaution if you're infected. If you're not vaccinated and exposed to COVID-19, you should get tested just to know your status. And if you are vaccinated and you believe you've been exposed by someone, you need to wait five to seven days before you test or it won't come positive either way. And one final reminder, COVID is obviously a horrible disease, but really going to hospitals, calling 911 should be based on the actual symptoms you have. And the hospitals are not the place to go for tests. So contact your local doctor. You can also call 211 on your phone and the county will pick up and provide information about any questions you have about COVID and get you directed to the help you need. Next slide, please. And that's the end of my report. We're headed in the right direction. It seems like we may have gotten over the hump, but knock on wood, we've said that many times. So continue to be vigilant and careful. And hopefully, we can get things back to where they were several months ago where we felt like there was a little bit of relief. And that's the end of my report. If there's any questions.
Questions, council members, for staff? Robert.
Yeah, Matthew, so it seems like the county, when you're showing the numbers, the percentages of people vaccinated. So it seems like the county does have a way of finding out if people have had at least one dose of vaccination. Does that mean, can they also provide us the data of how many people have had two doses?
Yes, on their dashboards, they do provide that data and those numbers are anywhere from three to 5% lower than the numbers I just shared. So I think the reason they highlight the single dose is it shows how many people are on track and getting vaccinated. So the numbers I provided, I think 93% countywide and 100% in Half Moon Bay, it's around 5% less for each of those for the full course of vaccinations.
And then they could probably even let us know how many people have had a booster, I guess.
You know, they don't differentiate between full course being two shots and boosted, but we can certainly ask if that data will be available at some point.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great.
Anybody else? Thank you, Matthew, for an excellent report.
Thank you. Next, I'll turn the time over to John Doughty, our Public Works Director, who will be talking about a commuter survey.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Pleased to introduce Kim Comstock, Senior Program Manager with Commute.org, who's going to tell you in the community about an exciting opportunity to make your voice be heard with regard to commute issues. So Kim.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your time today. Yes, I'm Kim Comstock from commute.org. Commute.org is a public agency that works with employers and commuters on trying to get people to not drive alone to work. We have many programs and services and rewards that are focused on using commute alternatives. And commute alternatives are carpooling, vanpooling, taking a shuttle, the bus, biking, walking, micro mobility. So for us at commute.org, we wanted to find out what's happening with the coastside commuters. And we wanted to ask them information on what are their travel patterns? What are their transportation choices? And what are their interests in regards to commute alternatives? We care about our commute because it does contribute to the congestion on our coast as well as the air quality. And so commute.org is running a survey right now. It's the Coastside Commuters Survey. This survey is, the goal of this survey is to find out what are the needs of the community and how can commute.org and our partners, the City of Half Moon Bay, City of Pacifica, as well as the County of San Mateo, how can we change or adapt or adjust our current programs or offer new programs that can help people choose commute alternatives when they're going to their regular destination? This survey is focused on the commute to work or to college. However, we are capturing information about parents that are transporting their children to school, that we know that there's a lot of parents that are driving over the hills during peak times to get their kids to school. And so we also want to capture that data. So this particular survey is going to help us when it comes time to either, for us to pursue a grant or to help some of our partners to pursue a grant that helps us to have data that says this community could use this education or this type of subsidy or this type of program. So we encourage everybody to fill out the survey, give us your opinion. And in addition to participating in the survey, we'll enter a view into a raffle for up to three $100 e-gift cards as well as local gift certificates from the community courtesy of the City of Half Moon Bay. This particular survey is open till March 4th. And it is one of those surveys where you come to the link at your convenience. We have multiple ways to get to this. We have multiple ways to get to the survey. On your screen now, you do have a link, which is a surveymonkey slash R slash coastidesurvey is the direct link to the survey. There's also a QR code. You'll also see a residential mailer most likely by the end of this, this week, which will have the same information on there. However, but at any time, if you would need information, you can come directly to our website, which is commute.org. Also, our email, which you can reach me and our staff, is support@commute.org. And one important thing, too, is that our survey is available in English and Spanish by the same link and the same QR code. When you go to this, these links, you'll have an option to choose between English or Spanish and your preferred language. So this survey, we are looking forward to producing, at the end of the survey, we're looking to come back to the council, come back to the community, say what we've been able to collect and what projects and programs we're looking forward to, to launching. Thank you for your time, and please reach out at support@commute.org if you have any questions, or if you'd like the direct link to you, happy to help.
Thank you, Kim. I would also say that our intention is to try to provide link to this as well to the community and whatever we can do and whatever you can do out there to encourage folks to participate. I know that commute.org would appreciate it. And this information will ultimately be made available to us as we look at TDM, we look at our climate action planning efforts and all those things related to transportation. So this is important for, for us, as well as commute.org, to get the best and most robust information that we can. So, thank you. And thank you, Kim.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim and John. Do any council members have questions for, for Kim or staff?
No question. I just want to thank Kim and thank commute.org for the work that they do to reduce greenhouse gas. That's what it's all about. It's not just about getting to ride in a shuttle. It's about our climate and the sustainability in our communities and the ultimate survival of our planet. So thank you, commute, for the work you do.
Thank you.
I know that years ago now, when we were looking at schools for, for our children, I was talking to somebody in administration at one of the Catholic schools over the hill. And the woman told me, this is probably mid nineties now, that there were, her understanding was that there were fifteen hundred students from the coast side who bust over the hills to private schools. That's a lot. I don't know if it's still that way, that, that high a number. But I know from being out on Highway ninety-two in the morning, you can see the cars going by with one kid in the uniform in the backseat going to school. So I, I would recommend that we, you know, ask Cabral Unified School District to provide a link to this survey, you know, to, to parents, and that we ought to get something out in community news, too. So I, I think the school commute thing is a really key piece that we need to understand.
And, and Madam Mayor, I would just like to acknowledge Councilmember Penrose for bringing this idea to my attention. That's how it landed on my lap. So thank you, Councilmember Penrose, for doing that. I just think this is a great idea. I can't wait to see the results. And I can attest that the QR code works. During the meeting, I pointed my phone at it, and the survey popped up on my phone magically, and I'm already on question fourteen.
Wonderful. Love it when technology works. But thank you also to our Vice Mayor. This is good stuff. I guess we have one more city manager's update.
Just an announcement, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, lastly, we wanted to announce that we do have a vacancy on the Planning Commission and are currently accepting applications from anyone who might be interested. This is a four-year term, and the vacancy is for the fourth year of the term, so it does expire at the end of this year, but there is always potential that that term could be extended. The willingness form is on our website, hmbcity.com slash commissions and committees. There's also a banner on our homepage that will take you directly to that page. The requirements are that you be eighteen and over and be a resident of Half Moon Bay. The deadline for applications is February eighteenth, and if anyone is on the fence or considering applying, the Planning Commission does have a meeting this coming Tuesday on the eighth at seven PM. The agenda and Zoom link will be on our website, so if anyone wants to watch the meeting to get a better understanding of what all it entails, please do so. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jessica. That's it for city manager updates. We're moving on to the consent calendar. I'd entertain a motion from a council member, or if anybody wants to pull an item to identify Okay, well, then I will read and make a motion. I move that we adopt the consent calendar next in order. Item one A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item one B, ordinance amending Half Moon Bay Municipal Code Title Fifteen, signed ordinance, second reading. Item one C, amended mayor's list of city council representatives and designated assignments for 2022. Item one D, First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Integral Consulting, Inc., for Phase Two of the Miramani's Point Sea Level Rise Vulnerability and Fiscal Impact Assessment. Item one E, acceptance of auditors' reports from the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one audit. Item one F, treasurer's report for the quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Item one G, quarterly financial report for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And could I ask for a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rovat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Moving on to item two, ordinances and public hearings. Item two A, building electrification ordinance. I'm guessing John Doughty will introduce this item?
Yes.
You're better.
Happy you're up. You're the PIO.
Okay, I'm ready. Other staff are helping me in the presentation mode because you guys have seen me enough to know that I always screwed up, so.
Is, is someone putting a PowerPoint up for you right now?
I believe Jessica's.
Colleen is grabbing it, yeah.
Yeah, we're not seeing it yet. We'll give her a minute.
So I'll, I'll cover the basic background, just, you know, for those that haven't been tuned in, I guess. At the December twenty-first meeting, the city council directed staff to, to go, go back to the drawing board and a little bit, and to modify the ordinance and to come back at a future meeting to address the building electrification. Thank you. Next slide. And so, again, I'll just start at the twenty-first. The, at this meeting, the council provided direction, particularly to proceed and reverse course a little bit back to the point of focusing on new construction, particularly with regard to electrification and removal of applicability to remodels and some other things that I'll talk about a little more in detail as we go along. So that was the direction provided at the twenty-first. We are here tonight to consider introduction of this revised draft ordinance. What I will say in terms of the draft ordinance that is proposed is that it is still on providing and recommending significant changes that are go beyond what most of your neighboring jurisdictions are doing, particularly as it relates to committing and connecting the dots with the removal of gas connections by a set date of twenty forty-five. Also, the applicability to not going backwards in time with regard to current all-electric buildings, and then obviously the applicability toward, toward new constructions. So even, even though there was, you know, fairly significant revisions and, and the modification to this, you still are out in front of many of your neighboring jurisdictions and what's going on. And what I can say in addition to that is, is that your efforts have sparked an incredible amount of activity on the other side of the hill for San Mateo, Santa Clara County, and we have been talking to doctoral students from Virginia, Stanford. We've talked to folks from Santa Cruz. They're all asking the questions of how did we get to the point, how did we work through this, how did we kind of deal with these? So your, your, what I want to just ensure folks is, is that your efforts, I believe, lead to a more robust and, and also a more regional approach to many of the issues, which I think was part of the concerns that ultimately came about and we heard from the community. I also think that we can say that this will also spark movement, I think, in, in the issues of finding, finding financial incentives and monies and everything with that deal on a broader, you know, basis, looking at Santa Clara, Santa, you know, San Mateo and other counties kind of adding to that mix. So I think, again, please don't look at this as, as anything, but I think still moving the ball forward, shall we say. Next item, please, next slide. So why, you know, these are repeats a bit, but I think for those that might be joining is what, you know, what is building electrification more in general? It's, it's basically converting buildings to, that are currently using either fuel, gas, or a combination, usually a combination of fuel, gas, meaning natural gas most likely, but propane as well, and electric to convert and transition those folks to all-electric. And there are many reasons to do so, notably that as we're looking at our climate action plan and we're looking at current issues with regard to our twenty seventeen emissions inventory in Half Moon Bay, building energy represents a very significant portion of, of our total emissions, and that's why this was, and this remains an important piece of the equation. Next, please. So again, this is a repeat, but you can see, and we've mentioned this before, in Half Moon Bay, where we kind of have a juxtaposition from what most jurisdictions in San Mateo and the Bay Area are looking at, where we're, our building energy and the emissions side is higher than actually the transportation, but just a little bit higher. But again, that's, this is important work, and this, and given even whether other jurisdictions in, in the area are at forty-five, forty-nine, or whatever their numbers are, building energy across the board and across the state and across the region certainly represent a significant portion of our emissions and our greenhouse gas emissions and inventory. So it remains an important piece, and we continue to work toward addressing those issues. Next. So let me just walk you briefly through the, the draft and, and then turn it over to you and the community to, to tell us how we've done. Next. So the draft that's before you tonight kind of contains these, the principal elements, which are addressing all-electric new construction, prohibiting the conversion of all current all-electric residential buildings to mixed-fuel buildings, so we don't go backwards when it comes to residential buildings. It requires that the fuel, gas lines, notably the natural gas lines, are capped and are decommissioned by twenty forty-five. Now, there are exceptions to that because of statutory issues, meaning we can't stop the flow of gas from through the city to other locales that don't have these local ordinances in place, that may not have them at the time in twenty forty-five. And there are some other issues, such as mobile home parks, which are subject to and fall under the jurisdiction of the state. So there are, those are sort of the basic exceptions, but for the most part, they would apply universally across most of the city and most of the, the units and built and commercial enterprises. And then there are exceptions and exemptions, and I'll, I'll talk briefly about those. Next item. So the exceptions fall into basically three categories. One are accessory, certain accessory dwelling units, and those are accessory dwelling units that are either enclosed within the house wholly, where they use existing bedrooms and everything, and they make a unit, or where you're attaching an accessory dwelling unit. And the reasons why, and this is a carryover in the exemptions from the December twenty-one version, and it just simply is an issue where if we're not going to retroactively or prospectively change out appliances, then it's virtually impossible for us to require these types of ADUs to basically meet all-electric provisions, particularly when they're either attached and/or wholly located within a building that which may be mixed fuel. The other piece that came up during numerous conversations and, and meetings was the issue of how do we deal with approved and nearly approved development projects? And this retains the same provisions, basically the building permits to be issued by January twenty twenty-three, but allows people in process to continue to move forward and through. And then finally, development projects that have secured vested rights per state law. These typically fall into vested tentative maps for where you're subdividing land. And at this point, I'm only aware of one project in which this actually would apply potentially, who, who is submitting, who has submitted plans, is moving through the process, but, but we needed to make those provisions available. And again, that was a carryover. All of these were carryovers from the prior version of the ordinance. Next, please. Exemptions are similar to what was before you, commercial greenhouses, wastewater treatment plant, fuel, gas generators, and the portable propane tanks. So basically the same as what you saw in, in December of twenty twenty-one. And certainly happy to answer any questions you have on those as we get to that point. Next, please. And then, again, just to, to let the folks in the audience understand what the difference is, is that, is that basically what this did was remove provisions requiring electrification of existing buildings when proposing remodel or adding floor area. So prior versions before the December version included provisions for burnout, where you had to replace a, and go electric if your fuel, gas appliance burned out. Or frankly, at one, in one version, whether you, if you chose voluntarily to go completely change out and remodel your, your kitchen, you'd have to do that. That was already gone in December. The change, the primary change from, from, from to this ordinance is that, that it no longer applies to remodels, including additions, room additions, things of that nature. Next. So the recommendation tonight would be to conduct the public hearing, wave first reading, and introduce an ordinance adopting the new chapter fourteen oh six to the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code entitled Electrification of Buildings. Obviously, questions, clarifying questions particularly, I guess?
I would recommend clarifying questions from council members now, and then taking public comment, and then coming back for additional questions, but mainly discussion of how you proceed. So are there, I see that the Vice Mayor has a question. Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes. I'm wondering where the provision for annual review is in the ordinance that was not mentioned. And to me, that is one of the most critical points that I was making at our last council meeting and will continue to make. This is just a first step, and it's a glorious, wonderful first step, but.
Vice Mayor, I apologize. Clearly, there is provision contained in there, and I can, I can, I can certainly get you the, the, the reference to it when I can pull up the, the, the ordinance in front of me. But there is provision here, and certainly I think that as we've, as we discussed at the, in the December meeting and, and other meetings since, I think we are in the process of, of working on the climate action and adaptation. we are in the process of, of working on the climate action and adaptation plan. That will be a critical piece and this ordinance is required to be reviewed annually along with the climate action plan to see, so you can see both of them, you know, kind of hand in glove, working and seeing where we need to go. And again, I think it's important to really to acknowledge that this is one piece of the puzzle. We talked with Kim about commute.org and the issues of, of transportation event management. You, you made a great point on that issue, which is that transportation is a huge component to, to this issue too. And we need to look at all of those things in unison. And that's why it's an opportunity to look at, at every aspect. So I, I could certainly get you the reference specific, but it is there. And I apologize for not highlighting that, that specific item. It was a continuation of the same language from prior versions.
Good, thank you very much.
Councilmember Penrose, Madam Mayor and John, I, I've pulled up the ordinance. We can certainly share it if you'd like to see it. It's section fourteen point zero six point zero seven zero. And that it's, it's a periodic review. It requires an annual review when the cap comes around and a tri-annual review when the building codes are updated every three years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Raabach.
John, has the exemption for commercial greenhouses date changed from the previous ordinance?
It did, it did. This ordinance and we, we did highlight a bit of, of this conversation. There's two changes, there's two changes that, that are included in this ordinance. One is that we removed the existing provision and put it to basically all greenhouses. And that was certainly a policy issue that the council may wish to, to talk about, whether you want to put back only to existing, meaning basically applying to remodels. You know, this was a, this was a bit of, of a, of a question. We didn't really get to that detail in the twenty-first meeting about, on some of the provisions. What we heard along in this process was a desire to maintain that economic engine and concerned about this. And so we, we took a broader perspective on this to exempt basically new construction and remodels of, of greenhouses. And yes, that moved from 2030 to 2045. So those are two policy questions that are certainly open for council deliberation and discussion on that.
Yeah, there was also the issue of technology. You know, what technological fixes there are for them? And there just doesn't seem to be much at the moment, so. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Raabach?
Yeah, I, I intend to discuss the policy when we get to the discussion phase of the ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else before moving to public comments? Seeing none. Jessica, let's populate the, the platform with raised hands and see what we have and determine the number of minutes based on that.
Thanks, Mayor. If anyone has any public comments, please use the raise your hand feature.
And Jessica, if you could unshare your screen, it might be helpful. We can always come back to the PowerPoint.
I have a three hands so far.
Let's give it a minute. Again, if you would like to comment on this item of electrification, you can use the raise hand feature now. Okay, let's move forward with three minutes each.
Jack Hebb is first.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, cool. Council, thank you so much for your time. My name's Jack Hebb. I am twenty-three years old and I've lived in Hafen Bay for my entire life. And born and raised, went to all the local schools, et cetera, et cetera. And during my entire curriculum of here on the coast side, the importance of addressing climate change has been addressed from the beginning. And finally, there is something in front of you, council members, in order to act upon it. And I want to encourage you to vote yes and adopting this legislation in as aggressive manner as you can tolerate, preferably with the 2035 goal. But I mean, I guess if you have to compromise to 2045, that's unideal. But you know, I just wanted to say that at a federal level, our government is failing to recognize this climate crisis for what it is. And even at a state level, Governor Newsom just continues to let, like issue more oil drilling licenses despite claiming that he won't stop it, whatever. There's something in front of you, please vote yes. Every, like the sky turned orange. Hafen Bay High School is a literal evacuation zone during fire season. And this is all a direct result of climate change. There's something in front of you that's going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by forty percent. Like, please do it. And while there may be pushback today, please just recognize that in the future, this council will be looked back upon as the council that had the courage to act and do something for future generations. A lot of young people are just really cynical about government and politics, but I'm not. And that's why I'm here commenting at this meeting. And just please vote yes, please, please, please help us save our climate. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time and have a lovely rest of your day.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
And next we have Adrian Etherington.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Adrian Etherington, I'm a Hafen Bay resident for about the last eleven or maybe twelve years. Hopefully now that the more controversial aspects of this ordinance have been removed, it will pass easily, but I wanted to be here to support it just in case and thought a few reminders might be helpful. First, I think perhaps lost in all of this is the fact that cost effectiveness studies have shown that all electric new buildings cost less than mixed-fuel buildings. There have been about fifty other cities across the state that have already adopted electrification requirements for new buildings. We're also continuing to see the extremes of climate change. Despite above-average rainfall from October to December, we are still in a drought and we had wildfires in January. Recent reporting has indicated that the cost of climate-fueled disasters in the U.S. in 2021 alone was a hundred and forty-five billion dollars. The report also showed a steady increase in billion-dollar disasters over the decades. Another recent study from Stanford indicated that gas stoves leak methane even when they are off. In fact, that's when about eighty percent of methane emissions from stoves happen. The international scientific community has said in no uncertain terms that we must end fossil fuel use by mid-century. Putting that deadline into city law through the end of gas flow provision provides certainty that our city intends to do just that. Throughout this whole conversation over the last several months, I've heard a lot of arguments like, why does Hafen Bay need to do this? We're such a small city and it will have such a small impact. To which I would like to respond by adapting from the L.A. Times writer Sammy Roth, who recently said, "In the grand scheme of things, the amount of gas here won't be the difference between a habitable planet and a future of devastating wildfires, floods, droughts and heatwaves. But the same is true of just about any energy decision. They're all too small to matter. They all add up to something larger." Please vote in support of this common sense ordinance so we can stop digging a deeper hole and let's set our sights on the harder task of digging out. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Adrian.
And next is phone number ending in five, seven, nine, three.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Bruce Nagel and I'm a member of a number of sustainability organizations. And I want to say first off, that small efforts turn into large things. And so viewing that your efforts are tiny and, and therefore non-consequential really misses the point. I mean, one of the more interesting ones was the fact that when we started to have reach codes and, and created these codes for, for things, there were cities like Menlo Park, which is about the same size as yours, moving forward with it. And, and it's these incremental steps that keep moving things in the right direction. There's been some comments about the fact that we're doing this for our children and our grandchildren. I don't think any of us want to be able to face our children and grandchildren and say, "We didn't do enough to try to stop this." One of the positive things that I saw in what you proposed is the annual checkups and hopefully remediation. This is key. As has been stated, we're on a journey. We're not finished this. Moving it to 2045 is interesting, but one of the things you may come back to at some point is we need to do more and we now know enough to be able to do it and do it intelligently and cost-effectively. But it's a journey. We have not stopped it and we need to continue moving on that direction. You've looked at the, the issues that cause problems. You've done a good job of trying to work around them and hopefully this will pass. We need, we need every city to be part of this and we appreciate the efforts that you have put forward and the courage and leadership that you've shown. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
And next we have Petite Shu.
Thank you, Jessica. I want to start by saying that in context, the restrictions on new building are brilliant and you should run with them, but there's a point here that's being missed and I'm very surprised that people are not discussing it. And that is the fact that you're giving a free pass for political reasons to the greenhouse industry, which are by far the largest users of electricity on the coast side for twenty-three years. And because of that conversation and because of that change, you're opening up fossil fuel use in massive amounts on the coast side for twenty-three years with an affirmative declaration. This is going to be entered into the code, which makes it that much harder to remove, even with your year, or yearly reviews. I'm begging you to remove that provision. The original provision had ten years of waiver for the greenhouses. That was plenty. If they can't get their business in order in ten years to adapt to a change that has to happen, that's their problem. That should not be the problem of our children. So I'm begging you to look at the greenhouse provision and remove it or don't pass the ordinance and come back after the election when this will not be a political decision and it will be a policy decision, which is what it should be. And it obviously has not been over the course of the last two months. I want to thank staff for the immense amount of work they put into this. Mr. Doughty, I can almost hear the, the fatigue in your voice in your presentation tonight. I, I bet money you never want to hear the word electrification again for as long as you live and I wouldn't blame you. So that's all I want to say, just again, remove the waiver for the greenhouse or for the greenhouses. It's there purely for political purposes and that alone will do more harm than the houses you will restrict to electrification going forward. Thank you as always for everything all of you do.
Thank you, Little Cabbage. I see no other hands raised, so we'll bring it back to council for comments. And it looks like Councilmember Raabach is ready to go.
I'm ready to go, yeah. I absolutely agree with the goal of reducing methane from houses and, and commercial facilities. I thought the original ordinance that staff had developed in April was excellent. I was disappointed to see that the replacement of fossil fuel appliances was removed. I, I understood why, I could live with that. Then the remodeling requirement was also removed. I was disappointed about that. I felt that we really needed to, to have that in to make a significant reduction in methane emission. But I drew the line when I heard about commercial greenhouse exemption until 2045, when all fossil fuels would, would have to be stopped because we would cap the lines. I agree with the last speaker that as presently configured, this ordinance would do more harm than good. Because not that I, the, the reason is very clear to me. The, the amount of new buildings in the next year or two is going to be very small. But by ex, by giving green, commercial greenhouses the, the right to continue to burn fuel, gas is, once that right exists, to try to remove it is going to be very difficult. And as you can see, the, the, from the graph that John presented, commercial emissions from a commercial properties dwarfs what we have from residential properties. So if we really want to make a difference, we have to restrict greenhouse, commercial greenhouses, which are the biggest source of emissions. So although I heartily approve of the, the idea of reducing natural gas, I'm going to vote against this amendment or this ordinance unless we can remove the exemption until 2045 for commercial greenhouses or at least put it back to what it was in the ordinance that was introduced in December to have that exemption expire in 2030. So I, I don't want to do more harm than good for the environment and that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Who's next? Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. There's, uh, there's several things. Actually, the ordinance, as, as it is, you know, I do approve it to the new construction. You know, I understand about greenhouses. But as you may know, greenhouses in the coast, in Hafen Bay, you know, our businesses employ a lot of community members. No, I think right now, at least Rocket Farms, I believe employs about a hundred and fifty, you know, people, you know, to work at the location. If you may remember, two thousand and nineteen, when Bay City Flower Company closed their doors, about how many people became unemployed? I mean, I understand the effects of the green gases. I mean, believe it or not, I do care about the environment. But I also have a lot of other things that I would think about right now. You know, by helping our community survive right now. You know, can't really think about what could happen in twenty years. You know, when our community is having a hard time right now, as you heard today about housing. There's a lot of things that technology is not there yet to be our greenhouses. Technology is going to get better. So we just given the opportunity, you know, for, for the business of, you know, commercial greenhouses to prepare for that. I don't think they're going to go to 2045 before they make a change. There's other things, you know, that we can actually, on the research that I've done, the scientific proof that farming methods can actually help reverse climate change. We live in a farming community. So we're not looking into other options. We're looking into the electrification of our community. If it was visible for everybody to do it, if I knew there was not an equity problem, if I knew our community will actually be able to afford that, I would approve of the ordinance, you know, when it was first introduced. But it's not possible right now. So with this ordinance that we have, as of just for, for new, a new construction, I do agree with it. I do agree with it. I do agree about, you know, the commercial greenhouses, 2045. But also let's look into other options that will be of less cost to our community. That will be less affected financially. That will be more equitable. You know, so there's a lot of things that could be done. There's a lot of information out there, you know, how we can help reverse climate change. You know, and I'm okay with, you know, seeing the future, you know, with the technology, when we have the technology to be able to survive on a sort of power. If one day I am actually able to buy my own home, I'm going to make it electrical. I'm going to be, I'm going to have an electrical home. I like cooking, so I did a research on the three types of stoves that we can have. Electrical stove, induction stove, and a gas stove. For a person that cooks every day, like a business, a gas stove is more efficient. An electric stove would be the least to be used for a person, for a family, a person that cooks. Induction stove, they're actually great. You know, my brother, who's an electrician, has an induction stove. I've cooked in his stove before. Unfortunately, me being a cook, I'm not able to saute some of the food that I, you know, it is impossible. As soon as you detach the pan from the stove, what happens? It reduces the heat. So you have to place the pan back on the stove, you know, to produce the heat again on contact. Something that doesn't happen with, you know, with a gas stove. So no, I've been doing a lot of research, you know, in every angle. So like I say, no, looking into other practices of how we can help reduce, you know, green gases, you know, reverse climate change. They're out there. You know, by our community right now, you know, as it sits, you know, we cannot afford to lose another nursery, you know, the need, the greenhouses, I mean, a greenhouse for the business to survive. You know, community is already struggling. We're going to lose another 150 jobs in the next years? And then what? So I am worried about, you know, I'm thinking, you know, ahead of, you know, new generations. I don't have any grandkids, but I know I hope to have grandkids, you know. I grew up in Half Moon Bay. My kids grew up in Half Moon Bay. And I hope my grandkids grow up in Half Moon Bay. I'm looking forward to that. So I want them to inherit, you know, a clean community. But for them to do that, first I have to survive. My kids have to be able to survive. And that goes for other families as well. So I'm thinking about the present and I'm thinking about the future, not only about the future. You're about housing. How is a family struggling right now? We think about our children, about great-grandkids, you know, three generations down. Or we have families, you know, living in a room, 12 by 12. Think about two parents, three kids. Let's think about that instead. Let's survive right now. And yes, let's hope for the best for the future. So I do support, you know, the ordinance as it sits right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yeah. I was in favor of the ordinance as presented to us by staff at our last council meeting and disappointed that we didn't pass that ordinance. However, we're beyond that point. We have an ordinance in front of us right now that has some flaws in it, some important items that I think should have been kept in. I agree with Councilmember Rarback that 2045 might be an arbitrarily late date to be talking about having greenhouses convert. However, I also agree with Councilmember Jimenez. We cannot afford to put people out of work. People that are out of work don't contribute to a society. People that are out of work become a burden, not only to their families, but to the community as a whole. So if we want to keep a vibrant, healthy Half Moon Bay, we need to be supporting everyone in our community. And that includes the people that are employed at the greenhouses. Now, I say that with a caveat in mind that the provision that we do an annual review and that we include it as part of our climate action plan to build in incentives along with encouraging new technology to make it easier for conversion in the future of existing greenhouse gas emissions. I have faith that our council will be able to to update these provisions and to include things like remodels, small, minor, major, whatever you want to call them, all new construction, replacing existing gas appliances, getting the ordinance back that we originally had prepared for us by staff. I think that it's going to take an effort on our part to educate the community about the ordinance, to educate the community about the significance of the changes that we're asking them to make and that we will be asking them to make in the future and that that education will help to get us the support that we need from the community to see that we can do a better job than we're doing this year. But all that being said, I am in favor of this ordinance and I am going to support it. And I'm very, very proud that we're a city that is able to come up with an ordinance that is going to work, it's going to work for us, and it's not going to put too much of a burden on anyone. So I'm in favor and I'm in favor of... Well, I'm in favor of the ordinance as it's written right now and I look forward to revisions like like Councilmember Rarback mentioned and that I mentioned at the last council meeting, being incorporated over the next several years.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Penrose. Councilmember Brownstone.
Well, people have said a lot of things I agree with. Actually, Mayor Rodeck, I'm interested in your thoughts about, I think you met with Rocket Farms, so I'm interested in your sense of the technology, giving them a carte blanche till 2045 or maybe cutting that, because that's 33 years from now. So if we instead gave them 15 years, you know, maybe 2035, that might be a compromise. I'd be fine. But I'm actually interested in what you may have learned when you, you know, because you probably had a much more robust conversation about the technology, what the potential is for them catching up at some point.
So after one of our meetings discussing the ordinance, I decided to look into the greenhouse issue. And I grew up in upstate New York, immediately adjacent to the Cornell University Agricultural Research Station. And they were doing leading edge things way back when I was growing up. It was a long time ago. But I know they still do. So I looked into what Cornell might be doing, because I know they're also very interested in electrification and a very progressive attitude, both at the university and in the community, about reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. And they're still in the phase of energy efficiencies, you know, using existing technology. They're just not there yet either. And, you know, these buildings are of, you know, commercial greenhouses are of a scale that makes it, you know, very difficult to change your practices without, you know, very large impacts. So I had a conversation with a gentleman at Rocket Farms about it and they assured me they're very committed to moving forward and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. They're doing their own homework on it, but they felt that the seven years that we allowed up to 2030 just wasn't enough because of all the planning ahead that you have to do. And plus, they have all these employees that they, you know, pay to do work and they have to, you know, think about their manpower issues. So, you know, they said that they would be happy to, you know, work with us as we move forward, but they're not ready to do it right now because of the technology and the advanced planning that's required. So, you know, we're going to be revisiting the cap and what we're doing with electrification every year. We can continue to do outreach with the greenhouses, just like we're going to be doing with the public on, you know, existing structures, electrifying them. So, you know, I'm feeling pretty good about the ordinance that we have in front of us. It's not everything I want. Like I've mentioned previously, I, you know, have worked very deeply and, you know, climate adaptation work and also understanding the science. And, you know, I believe that we have to act way more quickly than we are, both as a state and a country and, you know, the planet. So I'm unhappy with the pace of change. But I think this is a really good start. I think even the action that we're taking tonight that's, you know, about new construction sends an important signal to the industry, to others like, you know, banks and investors that we mean business and into the public. This is where we're headed, folks. You know, let's talk. Let's have a deeper conversation and let's have a program and let's move this forward. So we have to do what's possible now and I think this is a great start. I think, you know, we're leaning on the issue of decarbonization by, you know, a certain date. And I think we have to do what we can, you know, when we can do it and not do it in a way that creates a backlash in the public that sets us back, right? You know, we want to move forward. We want to bring people with us. And, you know, we do take our wins where we can get them and, you know, dig deeper and work harder, you know, which I'm prepared to do. So this is a start. I'd like all of us to be on the same page tonight and send that message to the community and continue our work on a more comprehensive ordinance and, you know, a program. I like the idea of having an ambassador's group that can work with the community of electricians. People are already, you know, doing electrification in their own homes and have a bigger conversation with the community about how things work. I have an induction range. I've had it. I have the first generation of induction ranges and I'm hoping sometime in the next year to get, you know, a new generation induction range. I cook a lot and I love my induction range. I'd like to share that information with the public. And I'd like us to actually show an induction range to members of the public who are interested. I think we could switch out our gas range over at the TED-impact Center. So I'm supporting this ordinance tonight. I would love for us to have a 5.0. I think it's being on the right side of history and following this, you know, work hard to advance the cause for existing structures as well. And like Vice Mayor Penrose said, you know, looking at incentives and tax credits and that sort of thing. And I agree with Councilmember Jimenez that there are other issues that we have to take into consideration. You know, we're an ecosystem, you know, it's our natural resources, it's housing, it's our economy. You know, we're dealing with a system here. And so when you make radical changes, you have to understand what the impacts are on all the components of your system. You know, otherwise, you know, you throw a wheel and the car ends up in the ditch. So it's very complicated. It's not, it's not a simple thing. And there was a great quote, I think it's H.L. Mencken, you know, "For every problem, there's a solution that's simple and easy and wrong." So I think we've been doing hard work on this. Staff's done amazing work. We've had, you know, deep conversations. I hope this continues. It's the most important discussion that we can have right now on how we address climate change and we must address it, you know, at our level, on our scale. And, you know, the impacts are cumulative and we do make a difference. And like Staff said, we're already making a difference, you know, with other jurisdictions, you know, over the hill. So I'm proud of the ordinance that we have in front of us. I'm going to support it. And I know that Councilmember Rarback actually was the person who brought a reach code to our attention, you know, a year or two ago. So I would ask Councilmember Rarback if he'd like to make the motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I I can't do that. All the reasons I mentioned worry me that the ordinance as proposed will do more harm than good. And I don't want to give a free pass to commercial greenhouses, which are the largest source of methane emissions in the city. So while I agree with everything you said about the importance of trying to combat climate change and the importance of setting an example to the community, I don't think the way this current ordinance is drafted is the right way to go and I think I've explained why. If we could change the part that exempts greenhouse gases, commercial greenhouses from their emissions and exempts them until 2030, which was the ordinance that we had in front of us in December, then I'd go along with it. But as of now, I can't support it.
Oh, I'd like to apologize to Councilmember Brownstone. You actually haven't had a chance to weigh in yet, so I'd like for you to have that opportunity and then I'll go to, again, to Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what you said, Mayor Rodeck, and I appreciate your input. And especially around, you know, what some of the state-of-the-art technology at Cornell is and giving us your feedback on that. I'm ready to approve this ordinance. I am very, you know, sometimes you really have to figure out what we are pushing forward and what community readiness is. And I agree, you know, we want to avoid a huge backlash, which will go against our interests. And I like the idea of educating folks. I love the idea. I've seen a video, people showing us how you cook on an induction oven. And just bringing some... And just bringing some folks and, and whether we can create some more incentives. I think there is money out there. And if people are so happy with a city like us taking a lead on this, then I'm hoping that some of our state legislators will say, hey, you know, in respect for what you guys are doing, we will give you money for incentives so you can continue forward in showing how this works. Which then gives time to other communities as some of the costs hopefully would decrease. But there was the numbers that were getting thrown around were so inconsistent about how much it costs for an electric. I mean, there's folks out there who are pretty diehard environmentalists who, who I was surprised were writing and saying, hey, you have no idea how much this could cost. So that got my attention. And I'm glad that we took in as much public comment as possible. But I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm fine with the yearly review, but we also don't want to keep the community on edge every year. You know, oh my God, are we going to make me exchange everything now? You know, we need to have a good communication plan. So it doesn't feel like this huge stressor that they're waiting on. So, um, yeah. So thank you. That's my input.
Um, one more quick thing to Councilmember Jimenez's point about, you know, the opportunities in agriculture to sequester carbon. You're certainly, you know, right about that. And a lot of research has been done at the state level on soil management and grazing management to accomplish that. And, and I understand there, there will be continuing work in our own community, you know, in those, those areas and hemp. You know, hemp sequesters carbon. It's one of the plants that sequesters the most, you know, carbon. So there, there are things that can, you know, be done in the meantime, you know, to, to try to, you know, you will achieve a parity with, you know, changing out the greenhouses, but you can make improvements there. So Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes, I, I appreciate Councilmember Rarback's comments. And his question to you, which started out as a question about the possibility of a compromise on the greenhouse issue. And I'm wondering if Councilmember Rarback would be willing to consider a compromise, or if the rest of council would, if we change the ordinance to say 2035 as a compromise from 2030 and 2045. That's 13 years. It, it is an incentive then, more of an incentive to the greenhouses to do something. It's not such a short time that we're asking them to start making the changes now. It does give some time for technology to catch up. It does give some time for the greenhouse, the producers of vegetation in the greenhouses to come up with different methods that might be less offensive and, and produce fewer greenhouse gases. So in, in, and then the other point I wanted to make was I, I don't see our annual review as a, oh my God, let's look at the issue all over again. The idea behind the annual review was that we will have an ongoing program where we are constantly assessing our greenhouse gas emissions. It's not something that we do once a year. It's something that started and will continue until we can be carbon free. So that's the path I want to be on. And it's a measured path and it's a path that we will check in on our progress once a year. That's the way I see it.
I, I, I see a problem with horse trading on the greenhouses tonight. First of all, you know, the, the ordinance doesn't, doesn't have 2035. So the greenhouse operators or owners don't have a chance to weigh in on it. And frankly, until we can get a handle on what's realistic, 2030 or 2035, the greenhouse is this kind of arbitrary. I'd rather work with them on a, on an earlier date that, that seems more realistic and, you know, and based on, you know, realistic assessment of what's possible rather than horse trading tonight. I'm perfectly open, you know, to working on it and coming up with an earlier time. But I think it's, it's unfair to, to do that tonight. You know, we can talk about it during the cap and happy to, you know, have a conversation. You know, when we take our, our annual review, but I, I don't think it's a, it's a fair change to make tonight. I think it would be arbitrary. But I'm happy to hear from Councilmember Rarback.
Well, as a compromise to the compromise, how about, say, keep the 2030 date for the commercial greenhouse conversion with annual automatic reviews until 2035, something like that.
I personally won't support that. But I would like to hear from Councilmember Brownstone, Councilmember Jimenez.
I think, you know, I think we should go with the ordinance as proposed. If technology changes, we can always change the 2045 date. If we're already going to be reviewing other things, we can review that just as easily. So I'm fine with moving forward on the ordinance now. And I'm happy to make a motion unless others are have others, unless someone else has something to say on that.
Actually, I want to say that I, I do agree with Councilmember Brownstone in, so I'm ready to, to second the motion on the ordinance.
So did you actually make a motion, Councilmember Brownstone?
I can make a motion. I move that we waive our first reading and adopt an ordinance. A new chapter, 14.06 of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code entitled Electrification of Buildings.
Second.
Wait, I'm sorry. Does that mean first?
Yes. Were you ready for the roll call, Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
No.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Everyone, staff and council and in the community for taking this path with us. Appreciate it.
Just one, one comment. I, Councilmember Rarback, I sincerely respect your position and sticking to your guns. I just wanted to say that.
I think we all, you know, committed to, you know, looking more closely at this and, you know, getting a, a realistic timeframe that, that works, that works better.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to give a shout out to Veronica, who had the baby, little bouncing boy and all healthy. And we're excited about that. But any, any, any consternation or issues you saw from me was simply I'd been relying on her so much to, to carry this along. And so I had to, I had to pick it up. So it was not about subject matter, other than the fact that I relied on her so extensively to carry this item forward. And we wish her well, the baby well, family well. And, and thank you for for civility and, and getting us to this point. And again, I, I think we all agree that this is an initial first step toward, you know, more, more to come down the road.
Thank you to Veronica. Let's hear it. Okay, so where are we? We are Commission and Committee Updates. Do we have any of those this evening?
Madam Mayor, our Community Development Director, Jaleekis, is still recovering, so she has no update tonight. And I do not believe Matthew has an update at Parks and Rec, but I see he just turned his camera on. Matthew, do you have anything to add at this point?
Sure. I'll, I'll just, we, we met last week with the Parks and Rec Commission. It was our first meeting of the year. Hillary Stamper has been elected as the chair and Adam Eisen has been elected as the vice chair for 2022. And I think the most important thing that we took care of at this last meeting was starting a discussion on their priorities and planning for this upcoming calendar year that will continue at our meeting in February. And some of the items that are coming up for that commission include in the coming months, a workshop on Smithfield and the master planning around that. And a discussion of CIP planning for the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you. I guess as a reminder, we meet the fourth Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM and we're currently virtual on Zoom.
Thank you so much for that report.
And Madam Mayor, John Doughty also has an update on, I believe, the first meeting of the Bike Pad Advisory Committee as well. John?
Thank you. I, we recently held our first meeting of the year with Bike Pad Advisory Committee. This was the reconstituted committee and went through a lot of great stuff. And we have just, I think, a phenomenal committee and excited to work with them. And thank you and thank them for being willing to serve. And we held a joint meeting last fall with the Parks and Rec Commission to, again, sort of link up our efforts. And so we'll be continuing to, to include those, the two parties together in that they're kind of in, you know, link together with regard to the parks and, and the pedestrian access and, and trails. So we, we can give at a later date a little more update from that point, but great, great committee and a great meeting for the first of the year. And Mario Rendon is, is the chair of the, of that committee. And I think each of you know Mario.
Great news. Yeah, wonderful. Moving on to City Council reports, is there anyone that would like to report out from any of your regional commissions, boards, advisory groups, committee assignments, any news to report? Harvey?
Briefly, I attended the LAFCO meeting last week. There wasn't anything substantive, but we did discuss the, how we're going to get a new executive director appointed. And I went to the Mid Coast Community Council meeting that lasted until midnight, where they talked about a pilot project to allow off-leash dog walking at Pillar Point Plus and Quarry Park. And at the end of the four hours of discussion, they came up with a letter that to the Planning Commissioner of the county to recommend that Quarry Park be allowed dog walking, but not Pillar Point Plus. So you think our meetings last long? You should go to the MCC and see what endless talking can lead to. So, thank you.
Well, Harvey, we're well-served by your participation on LAFCO, PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy and Mid Coast Community Council rep. So thank you for doing the heavy lifting there. It really benefits us.
Sure.
Deborah?
Yes, I attended a heart meeting and a commute.org meeting, and both of them were about the budget. So there's nothing really to report. There was, however, a library JPA meeting, San Mateo County Library. And that was interesting. We received the results of a survey that had been done to try to find out what the needs of the community were for their libraries. And the results of those surveys showed that what we needed to do was a little bit more in-depth work with the Latinx community to see what more they needed and exactly what it was that they needed from the library. So the survey is going to be continued and more work done on it. And that's, I think, it.
Great. Much appreciated. Harvey, I see your hand is back up again.
You, you reminded me that I went to the PCE meeting last week also and one of the wonderful things that came out of it was a program to subsidize e-bikes for low-income people. They, they raised the rebate to $1,000 per e-bike and it raised, had a number of new bike shops that will be giving out bikes. Up to now, I think the coast only had two bikes that qualified, but I think there'll be a lot more. And it's a, it's a program that got oversubscribed like in the first week when they started giving them out. So there'll be a lot more e-bikes available for lower-income people with a $1,000 rebate per bike. That was good news.
What do they cost?
What?
What do they cost?
Well, they vary, but it depends how fancy, anywhere from $1,500 to $3,000.
Harvey, could you, you know, take on the, the responsibility of gathering all the information about PCE rebates and getting those to staff so that we can publicize them, whatever they are, whatever, you know, rebates or incentive programs that you think we might benefit from. If you could take it upon yourself to get all that information to staff so we can get that out to the public, you know, that would be great.
Okay.
That's a, that's going to be an increasingly important, you know, thing for us, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, it's, it's a wonderful organization and it's underappreciated. And the latest proposal is that we're going to be buying electrical power that will be 24 by 7 coincident, that's completely renewable, 24 by 7. So that, you know, in the, at nighttime, when the sun doesn't shine and the wind, the wind doesn't blow as much, we can still get 100% renewable energy on our grid. That's a very underappreciated fact, but PCE is working hard to get that implemented by 2025. First in the nation that will do that.
Well, that'd be, you know, we would really appreciate it if you could, you know, keep us posted on all this stuff and, you know, you know, get links and information on our own website and out in community news. So that's, that's, that's good stuff. And, and you've been on there now for, I think, two or three years. So, you know, whatever you can do there would be much appreciated.
Okay.
I just have one report. We had a San Mateo County flood and sea level rise resiliency district at the end of last month meeting. And Assemblymember Mullen had gotten in the state budget for this fiscal year $8 million for, for one shoreline, half of which is for projects and half of which is to, you know, defray heat organizations, you know, staffing costs and overhead and things like that. So that was a, that was a really great piece of news. And the Coastal Conservancy is actually going to make a grant to one shoreline at its board meeting this week. So there'll be, you know, more money for, for projects and hopefully some money in the coming budget for projects, including maybe some money in the coming budget for projects, including maybe on the coast. So, Pete, everybody updated about that. And, um, the Planning Subcommittee of SAM met also. And, um, we directed the SAM General Manager to update a study that had been done almost 10 years ago on the electrical system for the, um, sewer plant, which is on the west side of the sewer plant property and underground and under threat from rising groundwater and sea level rise. So we're probably going to have to come up with a plan soon to move that system. We'll be bringing back, um, a study and a recommendation to the SAM Board. Anybody else? Okay, so moving on to, um, future agenda items. Um, I, I have one that I'd like to go on the, um, agenda for the meeting of February 15th. And it has to do with redistricting. Um, and, you know, we've heard from a couple of people on, uh, from Kenyatta Cove. And I, I guess there was more input at the, um, the recent redistricting advisory committee meeting about, um, a map that better meets the needs for Kenyatta Cove. In any case, looking back at our, our past meeting, um, a majority of the council, um, approved a map. And, um, basically, the action taken, you know, abridged any further, you know, public input on the process. Because originally, we were going to have four meetings, uh, you know, giving the, the public a chance to weigh in. So I know that, uh, um, an item was coming back on the 15th. It's a first reading to adopt that map. But I'd like a, an item on the agenda before the first reading item. So the council can have a, uh, hopefully a robust discussion, um, the issue of public process around selecting a map. And of course, I'll need a, hopefully a second council member to, to join me in putting this item on the agenda.
I agree.
Okay. So we have two people. So a new item before the first reading on the, um, map adoption to, to discuss the public process and what actions may have, you know, inhibited further public input and whether there's a, a, a chance to remedy that by following the original, um, schedule for adopting a map. You know, we, we don't have to adopt anything until middle of April. I don't think there's a rush. I think there's new public input. The committee acknowledged it. And so I think we need to have another discussion before the first reading. If staff could put that on the agenda, that would be great. And I see that, uh, Councilmember Jimenez also has an item.
Yes, I have a request for an item, uh, on a future agenda. And this is about an invitation, uh, to have, uh, experts come present about farming, uh, practices. They can actually, uh, is scientifically proven that can, uh, reverse, uh, climate change. I know we have experts in our, in our community. I know several of them. Uh, I can make an invitation. Uh, so I'd like to have an agenda item, uh, the future agenda, you know, to talk about that. And how, uh, our community, being a farming community, can actually benefit from that. There's a lot of benefits, you know, some of the farming methods, uh, that are actually proven.
I would second that. Yeah. So we have three of us who would like to hear that. Thanks, Harvey.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Riddick, if I could clarify your item?
Yeah.
Uh, so we have noticed the public hearing for consideration of the map, but we certainly could, during the staff presentation, talk about the public input process and kind of where we've gotten to this point. Um, the item that you've asked for seems like it would fall under a business item, which comes after the public hearing. So I'm wondering if there's a way to combine.
I certainly don't want to have this discussion after the item.
Right.
I'm, I'm concerned about the process here and that maybe the council had acted too quickly. Now, we might end up with the same map, but there are people concerned about the process and potential disenfranchisement. And so I, I want to have a separate discussion before we consider the first reading about, you know, the process that was originally scheduled and, and whether we should be following that process as opposed to the abridged process that we've ended up with. So I, I'd actually like to have a discussion item before the public hearing.
I'd like to hear from Catherine on this because I'm a little, um...
I'm so, I'm not sure if I have, um, any, much to add beyond what Jessica said. Um, this does seem related to the, to the public hearing. Now, certainly as part of the staff presentation, um, staff could include all of those topics, um, before there's any, you know, consideration or vote on the, the ordinance that, that staff has directed to bring forward. I want a separate item.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, first of all, you already have a second on it, but I just not sure. I mean, there was a, um, there was another redistricting committee meeting last week on the 27th. And they took a fair amount of public input there. And they're producing, in my understanding, as a final report that we will have before us to consider at our next council meeting. So, um, you know, I'd like to see what that final report is. And, you know, again, I'm very concerned about anything that appears like we are putting more than our fingerprints on, um, their recommendations. That's the whole point, is to keep them independent. So, um, if they have a final report and they took more public input, and I feel, and my understanding is people from, um, the Cove have plenty of opportunity to give their input. So, and that was taken under consideration. And we'll see what comes up on their final report. But again, the more we, you know, I don't want to undermine that independence of that committee. I like the notion that we've been very careful not to have our fingerprints on it. And, um, you know, people won't want to serve on these committees if we, uh, have the appearance of not preserving that independence. So I just want to comment ahead of time, that's a concern, so.
I'm not interfering with their recommendations. I'm asking for us to discuss them.
Yeah.
There's, there's no reason to rush here. You know, we have until April. So I'll ask Deborah Penrose, our Vice Mayor, how she feels about it, if her hand is raised.
Well, um, I was just going to say that, um, I attended the last, uh, meeting. I attended it. I watched it on video on Pacific TV. And what I saw was a very frustrated committee that felt that they had been short-changed of a process that, um, would include two additional public meetings. And I, I agree with Councilmember Brownstone. That it's not our business to tell them how to run their meetings. Um, but the city did propose a schedule that they wanted to follow, and then they felt that they were short-changed. So that was the objection that I think Councilmember Riddick is, or Mayor Riddick is referring to, was it's not the substance of what, not the complaints from Kenyatta Cove about the particular map that was chosen, so much as the process that City Council used would short-change the committee of their public meetings. Am I stating that correctly, Debbie?
Much more articulately than I did. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I certainly highly recommend that we all, you know, there's opportunity to watch the tape of that, um, 90-minute meeting on PCT. And we can also draw our conclusions on what those issues, what were the pertinent issues that were raised and how the committee members felt and where they ended up. So, and that's great that we will do that and come fully prepared for our next council meeting.
So I'm, I'm still insisting, and I'm guessing the Vice Mayor is with me too, to have a separate discussion item on process ahead of the public hearing.
We'll figure out the logistics.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll work with Catherine and Jessica, and we will figure a way to place the item on the agenda that meets the direction that we just heard.
Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Yeah, thank you.